For the town of Superior. Normally, we do roll call.
I will do roll call.
Okay.
Chairperson Sotell.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Momart.
Here.
Phyllis Harden. Commissioner McCool.
Here.
Commissioner Malia.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Just barely.
Commissioner Stewart. Commissioner Ritchie.
Here.
Commissioner Witty.
Here.
Attorney Hillary Graham.
Here.
Planner Stephen Williams. Here. That's it.
All right. Thanks, Stephen.
Sorry about that.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Next item is public comment on the consent agenda or non-agenda items. We've got a couple of members of the public. Anybody care to speak? No? Okay. All right. All right. The next item is the, on the consent agenda, approval of the minutes of the June 27, 2017 meeting. Has everybody seen them and has anybody, if not seen them? Okay, let me see if I can.
That's what I just gave you.
Oh, this is the?
Yep.
Oh, sorry. I thought this is just today's agenda.
No, that's the minutes from the last meeting. Should be, unless I printed something out wrong.
I don't think, here, I think we've got something.
I can pull it up, though.
Yeah, it's pretty short. Nope.
Give you a chance to see them.
Thank you.
Okay. Any changes?
No.
Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. McCool, second. Mr. Momart, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Okay. The next item is discussion of the Northwest Subarea Plan: Community Outreach and Open Houses. So, I'll just make a few comments. I know a lot of you were able to make it to the board meeting last night. I think we were hopeful that the board would act on our recommendation last night, but it was not an item on the agenda that required action. It was an item that I guess they approved the minutes of our meeting. And my understanding is that the, it will be an agenda item probably in August.
I think it'll be at that same, you know, August 14th meeting that you're going to discuss the McCaslin recommendation.
Okay. So, will it be an agenda item that they can act on and approve that?
If they choose to, yeah. I mean, if.
No, no. That's not my question. Will it be an agenda item that they can, that it could be, it could be voted on at that point?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Oh, I understand they can do what they need to do, but I just want to make sure it's going to be an agenda item for that meeting.
Okay.
So, I guess just on that point, it would make sense if everybody, or as many of you as possible, could make it to the August 14th meeting, board meeting. That would be helpful. We can figure out who wants to speak to what. We'll, we're gonna, I think I volunteered to present a memo to the, that'll be included in the board packet on the McCaslin recommendation, assuming that's appropriate with our, with our attorney.
You know, it's certainly okay by me. There may be expectations administratively through the town administrator about how that works.
Okay.
Typically, memos come from staff.
Oh, okay.
So.
In this instance, that was the recommendation, that it come from PC, since it's your guys' recommendation.
From the PC, okay.
I mean, it's not, it's fairly common practice with the committees for them to actually draft their memos and then, you know. So, that'll need to be to staff and then we'll get it to the board a week in advance of the meeting. So, I think that request was for August 2nd or 3rd for that to be completed by Planning Commission and then staff will take it and.
Okay.
And include it in their packets for that August 14th meeting.
So, you would need to have a draft, I'm just thinking out loud a little bit, and then approve it at a meeting for then to go? Do we have to actually approve it as a body or?
Right. I mean, if it's, it should be a memo of the whole body.
Yes.
So, if there would be a way to get it in advance so that the board could act on it, I'm thinking about timing. Is there an August?
I can confirm with Martin, but I thought that the general direction was that you guys have already made two motions, like.
I thought so.
At meetings on the same, on these topics. So, the, the idea for the memo really is just to structure, like, give them, like, yeah, an update on what you want to talk about and what your specific recommendations are and how you got there and, you know, what you want to get out of the meeting.
So, you would simply as chair be recounting what's already happened?
Yeah. I think that was what Martin was contemplating. Do we have a Planning Commission meeting between now and when we would be submitting that memo to the board?
If we did, it would be August 1st. That would be a couple of days in advance.
Is there anything inappropriate if I were to just circulate a draft via email for everybody's input so that we don't have to do a bunch of editing, you know?
Yeah. The concern there is that you could end up with an, you know, an unnoticed kind of online meeting if you're exchanging ideas and discussing the topic of the memo. So, if it, and I think if you're simply recounting what's already been, been passed, there wouldn't be a need for input.
Okay.
I trust you.
That's a big leap of faith there.
Yeah. I mean, I think as chair, you, you can recount what's already occurred.
Okay. And what I'll probably do is just go back through and watch our videos as we've talked about it and raise some of the issues that we identified.
Well, and you have last night's submittal that was actually part of the board packet that you could include.
Yeah. Now, that was, I think, relating to the Northwest Subarea Plan. And the initial one that we dealt with a couple of weeks back was the McCaslin recommendation.
Right. But I'm thinking the idea is to treat, to eventually get both before the board for action. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should I prepare both of those or can I ask for a volunteer to prepare one of them? Is that okay? All right. Any volunteers on that?
Well, I mean, I'm happy to. I'm a little puzzled what this would, I mean, we were pretty clear with our motion and what.
What additional information do we need?
Yeah. What, I mean, if we can talk about that tonight, I'm happy to prepare something, but I, I thought both recommendations were pretty clear.
I think it's more about putting it in a vehicle that's sort of recognized as a, as a way of getting board action. Does that make sense?
Can we pull them up? Is it, are they not? I mean.
Well, they, they are and you could simply restate that in the form of a memo to the board. But the way they appeared on the consent agenda, it looked like a recount of the meeting, not so much a request.
Well, there was a motion with the request for dollars.
Absolutely, there was. I, I think the, you're kind of charting new territory here.
Yeah.
And the board isn't used to getting this kind of communication. So, we're, I think trying to structure it as, as much like a staff recommendation as possible because that's how packets are typically put together.
Okay.
And how issues are sort of championed by either staff or a committee, so.
Yeah, and I know some committees.
We're kind of repackaging what you've already done.
Okay. Some committees have requ, made requests for dollars recently too, I guess. So, should we look at a staff memo then and?
I mean, I'm happy to do that. I'm familiar with how to do that.
The staff memo.
Martin was going to forward you on a few examples and did he?
He did. He did. And, and so, he gave me a couple of examples of, I think there were open space committee memos that were requesting board action. I think, you know, I would describe it as sort of giving the board a little more detail and vision into the decision-making process that went into the recommendation so they can just quickly, easily refer to something.
Yeah.
So, similar to a staff memo like we get when we have from, when we get a memo from staff for actions.
I would envision, right, it would probably summarize our work over the last number of months and we've met and we've talked about these things and these are the goals that we've got and here's specifically what we're asking for.
And why.
And why, yeah.
And a recommended action. I think that other than the format of the memos you receive has those sections as a recommended action.
Would that be the only item on our agenda for the August 4th meeting as far as we know?
I think it's August 1st.
Oh, August 1st.
If we, yeah.
If we had decided.
If you want to meet, then that.
That would be.
Right now, that would be the only thing and I can't foresee anything really getting on the agenda between now and then.
Okay. Okay. Well, I guess, not to jump around too much, but I guess I'd leave it to the commission to decide whether we want to meet, to go over those and do edits and things like that on the fly or if we want to just.
I have a question. I can understand that talking back and forth is drafting and may not be proper, but I envision it as more of an editing function of things we've already written down or said and why wouldn't that be okay?
I mean, the problem, the problem is, is really just drawing a clean line because someone turns on redlining and makes a suggested edit and then someone else responds. And, you know, we're really just trying to be as transparent as possible and not avoid the possibility of having an online sort of de facto meeting. So, if there's interest in doing that, my suggestion would be that, you know, the cleanest and most proper way is meet on the first, bring your comments.
We could email it ahead of time. Everybody could work on it outside of the meeting and then come to the meeting.
Come and hash out the final.
Yeah. Never mind.
Finalize it.
Sure.
Finalize it and talk about edits at the meeting.
Well, did anybody want to talk about the, the subarea plan? I don't know if there's a lot to be said at this point that hasn't been said, but anybody has further thoughts on that? I guess we're just awaiting board approval to move forward with this.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was disappointed it didn't get more action and more traction last night.
Yeah. I think we're learning the process as we go along here. We, we.
Well, we, we were just speaking with Hillary about that and I said, you know, is this proper function is, are we swimming upstream or are they swimming upstream? And she said that we're swimming upstream. It's kind of an abnormal process.
Could you, yeah, clarify some of that?
So, if, and I was actually thinking it might be, I think we have some new members since I did the training, I think it was about a year ago? I don't recall. Time flies. But if you'll recall, the Planning Commission has some statutory duties. Those are very well established. That's when you review plans and make recommendations and hold hearings. Then you also have almost more by your own interests, some more advisory types of duties. And those are the things you're really kind of feeling out now. There's not so much a mechanism, the way there are clean lines with your statutory duties to make a recommendation to the board and for the board to take those into consideration. So, we, and you as a body are kind of finding your own way. And that's where I said it's, it's almost like swimming upstream because the, the board and the committees are, and Planning Commission's special because it does have statutory duties, but in general, the committees are advisory. They have a, an approved work plan, as you know. And there are only certain ways that the committee reports back to the board. It's almost a top-down kind of system. And it's really not meant, at least not now, to have that kind of organic bubbling up of issues and priorities. So, that's, I think that's where you're struggling right now. I don't think it's a bad thing. It's just kind of a growing pains thing where it's up to the board and the committee to find out, kind of reach a stride about how they work together. You can recommend all you want, but, you know, nothing, nothing happens unless the board takes action. And I think that's where you're feeling some frustration of, you know, where is this all going? And it may be that at this point, you're doing it as, you know, a way of pursuing your own interests and it's not something that is picked up by the board. I mean, that's possible. So, the, yeah, I mean, I don't want to give you, mislead you, but I think you're doing all the right things. I mean, the ultimate goal is to get it on the agenda as an action item and then you have your sort of chance to get it voted up or down by the board.
So, how do, how do things get on the agenda? Can you talk just through what the process is? Some things, you know, staff puts on the agenda. Some things, I know two board members can make a request and get something on the agenda. The mayor can put things, can you talk that through a little bit so we?
They, well.
What the process is to get things on the board agenda?
Ultimately, the, ultimately, the agenda is kept by the town administrator and the kind of ultimate call of what's on or off is his. Things are initiated by the board and as such, the administrator will put them on. Things are requested by staff, but those are always cleared by the town administrator. And I think, I mean, we're looking at now, things getting put on by committees, but that also is vetted through the town administrator. If you'll recall last night, the RFP for art in the roundabout, that was a committee presentation, a specific item that the board wanted the committee to work on and the committee was reporting back with its RFP contents for how to select an artist. So, that's when it is, you know, bottom, it, direction came from the board, the committee responds. As I said here, it's, what we're struggling with now is more of a bubbling up of like organic grassroots, you know, interests where in good for you, you're active committee members, but it's not so much a system established to accommodate that. The board is the elected official. The board is the representative of the people. You're appointed as the assistance really of the board.
So, I'm the one who's been pushing and bubbling, I know, when I got on here. So, I'm going to push and bubble a little more tonight. So, because I'd really like to understand, I mean, a planning commission by nature is responsible for the planning in the town. And I know we have statutory responsibilities and things that we have to be faced with. What I've been pushing for is that there are issues in this town that require planning and need people to look at it. And, you know, we don't have a huge planning department that's out there, you know, working on it. We have Stephen and, you know, we have a lot of us who are, are been, been appointed to the commission to do this. So, we have a work plan that was approved by the town board. And so, we've been given direction. So, what, so I feel like I'm getting mixed messages, Hillary, because it sounds like, I, the town, so if it's a town administrator that's responsible for the agenda and we're given a work plan and direction to work and we produce an action item based on that work plan that goes back through Stephen, then I have to make an assumption the administrator's going to get that and deal with it. And if he's not, I guess I would like to know about it from a planning commission as well as a, as a member of the.
Two, two points.
Of the community.
I don't, I don't give messages, okay? I don't want to look, sit here and look like I'm a policy person because I'm not. I'm simply trying to explain the process. So, I mean, it's, it's possible that we need to request some information about how agendas work. I'm only conveying what I know through my experience. So, I don't want to be deemed as the, you know, giver of messages. I'm not. I haven't been asked to. What I'm doing is telling you sort of as a process how it seems to work. The work plan is authorized definitely by the board, but there's no sort of reciprocal duty that the board will act on any of those items. So, you're given your sort of authorization, your marching orders about what to look into and then you prepare items in response to that and then it's up to the board to take them on or, or not.
But how would they take them on if they're never presented to them as action? That, that's why, so, forget the messages.
Yeah.
I'm just confused because if the town administrator is the one responsible for putting them on the agenda so that action can be taken, but then it doesn't get put on the agenda when we ask it to be put on the agenda for action to be taken, then nothing ever happens. And I mean, I can push and I can call the mayor and I can be a citizen and do all the things I, I want to do as a citizen to push board members and them to push you guys to put, to put things on the agenda that we've been asked to do, but that seems backwards. It seems like if we have a work plan item, we work on that work plan item, we produce an action item. It should relatively quickly get decided upon and if they.
Let's talk about the character of the action items. What, the type of action items that, or excuse me, let me rephrase that. Let's talk about the products that the board produces or, excuse me, a committee produces. Typically, they're in the form of a report. Some sort of compilation of investigation, something that can be kind of, you know, picked up and put on a shelf. It's something that would go back to the board for the board's information and then maybe picked up as the board decides what additional actions it might want to take in the future. So, it's really not meant to be something that has to be turned around quickly. It's really not meant to be something that, the example I'm thinking of is OSAC was asked at the, you know, 2005 adoption of the open space tax, surveyed town property, determined, determined possible properties for open space acquisition. Well, OSAC did that and it returned a, you know, complete report that was submitted to the Board of Trustees and there was no immediate action needed, but that report has been used and will continue to be used to inform decisions that the board makes. It's.
In a case like that, sorry, I just kind of want to understand, did OSAC do the survey? Did it, did the town board assign a budget to it and how much did staff? Because I think that's part of the thing.
Yeah, there were contractors involved.
So, we don't have, or we haven't been, we've been, you know, we don't have the resources, I would say at this point, to do what you're saying committees typically do because we don't have a budget.
But when the board assigned OSAC that.
Yeah.
Responsibility, it gave it the authorization to have.
Right.
Consultants and had a budget because that was a board directive.
Yes. So, that's, and that's what we're missing still and that's kind of my point, right?
Exactly.
So, we can't just self-generate this.
You can ask, but you're finding there's frustration there because your priorities aren't necessarily the board's priorities.
Sorry. So, go ahead. I interrupted you. I just wanted to clarify.
I provide one bit of clarification. So, so I think this process has gotten a little bit muddled in the sense that the typical thing is for minutes to be kind of presented to the board as we have. And we did it with the transportation minutes and the, it actually got pulled and discussed and that, that either happens or it doesn't happen. If it doesn't happen like it did last night, then it could either get raised or you can come and comment, the public comment, and actually ask them to give you some direction on it. But I think in this instance, because they set the meeting for August 14th, the presumption is we're going to discuss that on August 14th and we have this earmarked for, for space and time already. So, we're going to have this meeting with Planning Commission. So, I think that's part of the, the confusion is that we, and it was kind of the conversation that I had with you leading up to it is that that was a possibility is that, you know, we could meet and that might be fruitful or we can make this recommendation now and it might be fruitful. We might get, to get started, you know, 30 days or, you know, 20-some days in advance or they may just decide we want to discuss this in more detail and, and then give you direction after we have, actually have a dialogue with you. And those meetings don't always have the time to have that dialogue, even if, I think there's been some discussion as instead of it being in public comment, we actually have kind of like you suggested a few weeks or months ago that you have an update, kind of like the chamber has an update and everyone, and there's a little, I think that's being discussed. I don't know whether or not they've.
That is, as far as I know, that is a thing that's happening.
Okay.
So, beginning in August, in addition to public comment, there will be a reporting period for committees.
And it won't be like you have to be here. If you have something to actually update and be here for, I mean, but it won't be every committee chair being here to, to give, you know, an update when an update's not necessarily necess, you know, required, but, you know, should there be something that you guys need to discuss with them, there'll be a more open communication and direct communication and, and time that's set aside at every town board meeting to do that.
And now, that won't be a time for board action.
Right.
Because it's a report. So, again, you're giving them information that they may choose to act on and they may choose not to act on. So, I think really you've accomplished the ultimate goal by getting on the August agenda and it isn't a particularly fast process.
So, the memos that we envision submitting to the board or with the board packet, that, I mean, those in some sense are kind of like the reports, right?
Mm-hmm.
They, they give the board some vision into.
Yep.
Our thinking.
Yep. And if there's a specific ask, you know, a specific requested action, then I think lay that out very clearly. I think also it's important to tie your submittal to your work plan, to show the board, hey, this is something we were asked to look into. We looked into it. This is our recommendation. You know, let us know or is it going to be funded? Is it going to be something that we can continue to work on?
Okay. Anybody have other thoughts or questions for Hillary or Stephen?
Do you think semantics play a role in it? I mean, in other words, if, if we submit a recommendation, that might not be strong enough wording to get their attention whereas if we did a request for action, that might. You think that's going to make a difference?
I think, I think stick with the semantics that are already used in the staff reports. That's what they're used to seeing. So, if it's a recommended action, then that, and that is truly what it is. It's, it's the Planning Commission recommending that the board do something and that's as strongly as you can speak. When we do get to the regular committee reports that are part of board meetings, I think that's going to be an important part of our preparation preceding a board report. So, in other words, we're going to want to clearly authorize somebody, if it's the chair who's available. If it's not, then somebody else clearly authorize, a representative from the Planning Commission, to speak on the commission's behalf and be clear that, that he or she is speaking with the full consent of the body. We want to be really careful to distinguish between you all and your individual citizen capacities and the, those of you when you're speaking for the board or the committee as a whole. So, and that can't happen unless the committee consents. So, we, we might want to work that into our Planning Commission agendas, sort of like a last item. What is the committee's report to the board going to be?
Okay.
You know, I kind of feel like maybe in one of our, maybe at a dinner with the board, I'd love to talk about what this process should look like. I mean, it, and they, they probably need to talk about it as well, I would imagine. But it, it seems to me that if, if we're going to develop work plan items, the board approves those, I, I don't want them approved if they're not going to take action. I don't care if action is no, but if it, if they're not going to take action, I really don't want it approved in the work plan item. I don't want to sit up here and come every Tuesday and, I'm sure none of us do, want to sit here and do a bunch of work and, and have no action. I know that's not happening. It's going to August 14th. But I, I think, I mean, I want an ex, I, I have an expectation as a citizen and then also as an appointed member of the Planning Commission that if we're given work plan items, then they will be looked at and then they will be acted on. And that action can be no. I don't care what the action is. I, we, it's just, it's inappropriate, in my opinion, to assign us work plan items and not. So, I'd like to make sure we understand what the, what that process looks like and it sounds like it's muddy.
It may be.
And I'd love to crystallize it a little bit, right?
What might be helpful is next time we generate a work plan, we also generate in the staff memo or in addition to that, we need budget for this. You know, don't approve it if you're not, you know, maybe so that we're more clear with them upfront of what we need if that gets approved.
Well, couldn't we also, couldn't we also, if we had another item on the work plan that we wanted to push up to the board, couldn't we, in our recommendation or someplace, state that we want this placed on the agenda at the next available board meeting for, for discussion? I mean, we, we don't have to, I guess this is a question. It sounds like a statement, but in other words, do we have to go through the extra step of getting the board's approval over the minutes and then come back and ask for action? We could just consolidate all of that. I think part of the frustration that Commissioner McCool is voicing and, and we experienced it a little bit, and this is no, I'm not casting aspersions on anybody, I'm just saying, when we brought forward the transportation thing, I think we were under the impression that this was on the, the board's agenda. They were going to take it up and discuss it and seek our feedback on it and we didn't appreciate the fact that, or recognize that there was going to be a whole nother meeting on that.
Right. Right, and the, the frustration, I think, is part of the growing pains and you are an active committee and that's a good thing. Just have to find a way to have your energy, you know, actually used and appreciated. So be patient, I think we'll work it out, I think it's just a transition.
Well, I mean, I think we need to understand what processes are, that's true, that's what I'm trying to dig for.
I think you're making them, yeah. Well, I don't think.
Who is responsible for what and what particular document needs to go to whom by when to get here by then so that X gets done, right?
Well, I don't, it's not a hide the ball, I mean, it's really, there isn't one. I mean, and I don't, I'm not being coy, they're really just, I think you're finding your own way.
So what I'm hearing too is that it's, it's some confusion on the, like, the sending end, like from us, like what we're going to transmit to the board. My understanding, and we, we've done it as, as how other committees have done it, so whether, it sounds like, you know, people are frustrated that it's not effective enough or it's not getting, getting the response, you know, like it's not a quick enough turnaround. And I, I think that the, the board also isn't really used to getting as many recommendations as they're getting, so they're, they're, maybe, maybe the minutes is, like getting them in minutes is a little more buried than they would, they would like to. So I, that's what we're trying to work out. And I'm not, I, I just want to be clear that what we did was what historically has been done as, as, you know, recent. And so it wasn't, you know, you know, anything different than, than the standard, so. And I think we actually probably got as quick of a, you know, you guys were at that meeting, we were able to get another meeting scheduled for this and, and that's part of the trick too, is that these agendas have been pretty full lately, so like getting something on the agenda, it didn't happen in July and part of that is that there's not a second town board meeting in July, so it happened in the first meeting in August, but, so there are some, like Hillary's explaining, there are some, you know, growing pains or whatever that we're going to have to work through, but it's, it's kind of, it's not that the board doesn't, you know, it's kind of on both sides. And the board is working to try to figure out how they should get these things. And I think that the, the first thing that they've discussed is, you know, having these as regular, you know, an opportunity for you guys to just communicate with them regularly on, on the meeting as not a, a member of public, like a public comment, so. But we'll work through that next section too, and if we need to make them action items so that we have five minutes of airtime or however you want to do it, we can make, and that, that can be part of your memo. I mean, that, you know, I think that one of the things that we first, one of the items we first had on our work plan back in January was figure out what the board wants and how we can communicate with them better. And that's something we're still going through. So I, I think that that would be a good thing to try, and maybe the first thing, we kind of communicate and then tell them that, you know, how, you know, ask them how and how they want to receive it and then we'll, we'll work from there, but, and then I'll also be sure we get to those other two critical points that we actually want some feedback on now.
I, I think one, one takeaway I had from our meetings with the board early on in the year is that they were really encouraging us to be more active and proactive. I think they really saw that as an added value for them, rather than us simply waiting for matters to be brought before us and then acting on those accordingly. So I guess what I'm getting at is I, I foresee this kind of being the future of the planning commission, that, you know, we have, we all have an ear to the, to the neighborhood, at least we try to, and, you know, we're all going to be bringing up things as we learn of them, we, we have periodic work sessions and, so it would be good to kind of get, to get this nailed down in terms of how do we move this forward to the board so they know what we're thinking and, and it's a matter of weeks, not months, before they are able to take it up.
Well, and a couple of observations there, agendas are set 60 to 90 days out. The, part of the reason for using committees, I'm sure you realize, is that the board can't do all the work itself. So, I mean, the board's already busy doing board stuff and then to further intake recommendations and, and, you know, work product from the committees is, is yet another obligation. So I think, but my point is to say, they're busy, they have a lot going on, let's establish some ways that you're comfortable communicating with them that are, become recognized ways, recognized pathways. And also realize that their job is to sort of filter through all that and establish the town's priorities, you know, you might not always be their top priority, so.
Or it may not be like 2017, so, you know, like it just may be a little bit of a process to get the, I mean, because it's budget, and they do have a lot to consider and they may, they may have a hard time taking action until they have more information on something like, you know, the, this traffic issue on McCarthlin is something that got identified, I think when Alex came and gave a transportation, you know, update, it was one of the things that hasn't been accomplished yet on the transportation plan, but, you know, like there are other areas in town that are also getting a lot of traffic interest right now, so they're, they're trying to, you know, balance all of that. And then, and then as, as far as the northwest area plan goes, you know, we have our first cut at that as far as, you know, like $15,000 to, to get some feedback and, you know, have these open houses and, and I think that, you know, once they have, if they approve that first step, then they're going to get a lot more information based, you know, to actually base their next judgment on. So it's going to be tricky because we're working against the, you know, the deadline of, you know, November, them setting their budget for 2018, but, but it is quicker, you know, and that's why you're frustrated too, I understand, that we're, you know, so, but I think those are all questions to ask, maybe even ask like, you know, how do they set their budget and what is their, you know, what is their expectation? What are they, what information do they need before they make their decision, rather than just, you know, these, these are kind of at the recommendation level, I think, once we have, and, and maybe what we, you know, if, if they're not receptive to these, then maybe the question is, you know, is it a study that we need to be done so to know what, you know, what the issues are traffic-wide, you know, throughout town or whatever, and then prioritize though, those, but we also have the transportation safety committee working on that, so. And I know that some of you have been attending those meetings, so it's tough to integrate, like, all of the recommendations from all of the different committees and they, they do have a, a difficult job, but I, I think that we're asking the right questions and it's the forum, you know, and I think that forum on the 14th will hopefully crystallize some of the stuff. Maybe not, you know, actually getting a forum with them and having that dialogue, because we don't, we don't have, we only have that one opportunity to sit down and really have a meeting with, like, dinner with them and discuss like the work plan for the year and then we don't do it again. I mean, then maybe one of the suggestions could be that we do that if they can fit it in, you know, bi-yearly, you know, or, or quarterly, so. But those are all things to think about.
Sounds good. Any other thoughts, folks?
That was helpful.
Yeah, it was, thank you. It was very helpful.
I think just to reiterate Hillary's point of how quickly this is going to move or not, how quickly this is going to move, I think we're realizing how quickly it's not moving.
Learning quickly is just the nature of government and the way the, the structure is set up. I mean, we can, we can push this all we want, but until we can get it.
Until it's a board priority.
Yeah, until it's a board priority. It's just, it's an agenda item that they'll address or they want to address.
Well, I'd like to work on that, because I, I, I don't think that's the right way to do it, right? I mean, to me, to me, starting at the beginning and saying, here's your work plan, we're going to approve work plan items that we can't actually deal with this year and we're going to make it a point to do it and we're going to have budget set aside to deal with it, because we're smart people and we, we probably know this is going to cost a hundred grand, so, you know, we're going to, I mean, we, we can think about this stuff in advance at all levels. I mean, it can be done that way and I know we're not there yet, I know it's, but, but it can be done that way and it'll reduce a tremendous amount of frustration by their committees and commissions and the board. They won't be, get overwhelmed and yes, I, I agree with what Hillary said, this is a learning experience and we're, we're kind of trying to figure out how to make this happen, but, I mean, I'd like us to get to the point where if we're going to have a work plan, then by God, you're going to respond to the work plan as we go through it or don't approve it, right? Because, I mean, that's just frustrating for, for everybody, right? And so I'd love to see us sort of try to work together to help them and help us reshape that so that, and so that the public knows what things are being worked on, because they're getting, they're coming to meetings, they're hearing about it, they're getting, you know, interested, if not excited, about the possibility of some of these things happening. And if it turns into frustration, then you get people down here just kind of screaming at the board and saying, I thought, I thought, I thought, you know, and, and they weren't. So I'd, I'd love to see us work to, you know, make it a very realistic process that people can depend on, that we'll get a yes or no answers and appropriate timing and all that good stuff, you know, that's, that would be, maybe it's a little.
No, I think we've done that. I think we've had a lot of discussions over the last number of months that I think we've taken a lot of, I think in the big picture, it's been great for progress for planning commission taking this different role, so. And I think we're setting ourselves up so that on August 14th, we will be able to clearly communicate to the board, here's what we want to do and here's why, and we've thought about what this process could look like, we've thought about what some end results, you know, may or may not be, and I'm just optimistic that they'll respond. And I guess, you know, they have to respond though, I mean, at some point, I think as a planning commission, if, if, we've taken this a long way and if they don't respond on the 14th, and that, that's where I'm feeling like, then, then I don't know what our next steps are.
Right, right, right.
I, I think we're presented with a board that will take action and I think they welcome action by, by the committees that have kind of been tasked with that, so I guess maybe hope springs eternal, but I think, I think we're likely to get some traction. Further thoughts, folks? So before we leave the north, if you can just hold that for one moment, before we leave the northwest subarea plan, Bob, did I see you raise your hand on a draft of a memo?
Oh, I was happy to do that, but.
I'm also happy to.
She offered that.
My only concern about doing it is the, the personal connection I have with this issue and like what Hillary said, I want to be careful.
Yeah.
Trying to separate what, you know, we've actually said and done versus what's in my head about, so I don't know.
Would you have time, Lisa?
Yeah, I'm happy to, yep.
I appreciate that.
Okay, so I'll do the transportation thing and then we'll plan to circulate these to the committee before the August 1st meeting and we'll plan to come to the meeting with edits and changes and somebody's going to have to fire up a laptop and hammer it up.
I'll be your scribbler and the turnaround time, I think, is pretty tight, because Stephen knows this better than I do, but the packet deadline, yeah, the packet deadline for the board meeting for the 14th is probably what, like that week?
Yeah, it would be that, we'd have to have something to the town, town manager by that Thursday, so we'd have two days.
So we'll meet on Tuesday, we can probably finalize it that night and then get it turned around.
Okay. Okay, well, I know we have members of the public and this is kind of off script, but if anybody, did you have something you wanted to speak to? If you could just step up to the podium and if you could just state your name and residence?
My name is Al Nudine, I live at 116th Sixth Avenue, right here in the new development. I apologize ahead of time, it's engineering in me. I hear from me, from a 10,000-foot level, listening to this conversation, I think it's broken and here's why. I agree with Mr. McCool here. What I think is missing is the board doesn't have a flow or a process. When you have a board, whether it's the government, whether it's the company I work at, what I do for my group, for my CEO, there is a flow. The flow says, this is what you do to get something brought up. There is a feedback mechanism. Without a fig, feedback mechanism, you have nothing. The question I have is great, I think, I can censure frustration, I see it from a 10,000-foot level, I have no clue what the board does, I'm learning what you folks do and I appreciate it, but I think what you need is that to think about, what happens if August 14th come and you're not represented? What's the fallback plan? I heard, unless I misunderstood, you went to this meeting last night, you were expecting something, you didn't get it. All this stuff about, well, I got to get on this agenda, that's crazy. If there's a flow and the flow says, I must prepare what I want to present on the agenda 30 days, 45 days, three hours, whatever it is, great, then you have a process. Right now, you don't. You don't even know if you're going to get on the agenda the 14th. You think you are, what happens if you're not? Have we confirmed that? I'm going to look to you, Steve.
They have an agenda item to meet with the town board on the 14th.
You are absolutely positive.
I am, yeah, it's a, it was set, I can't remember what meeting, but yes.
All right, so that's a start. But what happens if it doesn't happen? The board says, ah, you know what, this other thing is more important, do you have a fallback plan? See, and that's why I said, I apologize upfront, I could be way out in that field, because this is the engineering part that's coming out of me and this is what I do for a living, every day. We have a process. I run a firmware or a test organization and we have over 800 tests that we have to do to build hard drives. Every single test is documented. I have a flow that says, hey, if Mr. McCool says, Al, I don't like your test, okay, great, Bob, I, I agree, here's the flow you got to follow to tell me and how we can resolve it. In the event I cannot resolve it, here's a backup plan. That's what I don't see, maybe the board has one, but what happens when you get a new election? Are they going to have to go through the same frustration? No, if you had a flow, you already know what to go do. I think it will cut your frustration, your wait time, et cetera. That's all in my opinion. That's it, that's all I have to say, thank you for the time.
Thanks for your comments, I appreciate it. Anybody else have any comments they wish to make? I guess my, my bounce on it is that we are, I think we all know we're in uncharted waters to some degree and it's a little bit like baking a cake without a recipe and, and so we're, we're the prototype of the cake. And we may have to back up and we may have to figure it out as we go along, but we will figure it out. And I think that the process we do set up will be one that further, future commissions could follow and other committees could follow if they, if they want to bring forward something for board action, so.
It's a little rocky, but we'll get through it.
Okay, next item is staff announcements.
I think you guys mentioned already the, we had that concept plan meeting last night for Thriving Remington and the information that we kind of received from the developer or Ranch Capital at the end of the evening or later on in the formal meeting was that those applications would likely come in in September, October, this fall. So we'll have those to look forward to. We have some other kind of cleanup stuff and plating stuff in order to prepare those. We have roads to actually get constructed, to build them out to those, those areas, so those will probably precede those meetings, some plaits and some kind of horizontal panel development plans, that's for the infrastructure, prior to the fall, as long as they're on track and they get those submitted. We've seen, some of those have already been submitted, they just need to be resubmitted, I should clarify. And then I'd mentioned the, we're already kind of on track for the August 2nd, August 3rd due date for that, for our PC memo to the board prior to that meeting on the 14th. And then Commissioner Ritchie sent me an announcement, I think from APA, but I'm working off memory here, but it's for August 26th, it's a Saturday and it's a planning commission training , Behold and Golden, and it's from 8:30 to 3:30 and I can forward you on that information if any of you guys are interested. I believe it's free.
We believe it's free, right? We love, yeah, from memory it had partnerships with like Dr. Cog and DOLA and APA was where the notice came from, APA Colorado. The speakers on the agenda look really good, some kind of big picture planning trends, as well as it looked to me like some ethics and kind of procedural topics as well, so, yeah.
That sounds great, what date was that?
It's August 26th, it's a Saturday, I believe, and it's from 8:30 to 3:30. But I'll forward that on, so.
Okay, great, thanks Stephen. Okay, anything else for the good of the cause? All right, we're adjourned.